All right, everybody, I got seven o'clock and I call the meeting to order. Uh, thank you for coming. Uh, first thing I want to do is have a roll call. I'll start with planning commission members. Alex.
Here.
Tim.
Here.
Andy.
Here.
John.
Here.
Tony.
Here.
All right, Steve Bala, you're with us. Jim Miller is with us, Supervisor Miller. Um, or any of the other supervisors on board?
I don't believe there'll be any here tonight, Chris.
Okay, thank you. Um, anyone else want to identify themselves for the record? All right, hearing none, uh, first item of business would be the approval of the February planning commission minutes. We have any discussion on that?
None from me.
If not, can we get a motion to approve?
I saw motion.
Second.
Andy, all in favor?
I.
Opposed?
Abstain since I wasn't here.
Right, thank you. Um, all right, question carries. All right, so next item on the agenda is the discussion of cul-de-sacs and the street designs. Um, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll kick this off. Uh, as you know, we've, we've had discussion with three different projects. Uh, the three of our last projects about cul-de-sac and extended length and waiver of the extended length. And it's led to discussion on emergency access or exit or emergency service access. And I think we're just gonna carry on that discussion tonight. Um, we all received some from information from Steve Bala on the current regulations and what neighboring townships municipalities are doing. Um, and also the fact that we do enforce it in the age qualified, it's in, it's actually in the zoning for the age qualified. Um, so we enforce emergency, two, two points of emergency access in the, in the, uh, age qualified developments. Now, what, what are anyone's thoughts on this? I, I, I think the, the majority of the planning commission was agreement that anything over 800 feet, we were, we were looking to see something. Whether it was emergency access, emergency vehicle access, or emergency exit. Um, so I think I'll just open the floor to the planning commission members or Steve, if you want to jump in, if you have any, any new information for us.
Uh, so anything, um, as you did, I just had information as a conversation.
Breaking up Steve.
General overview. Steve, you're going in and out.
Using the wrong mouse. I'm getting mixed up with Zoom and this and Zoom, you could hold down the spacebar and you stay, your, your mic stays on here. It just turns it on and off. So too many platforms to keep track of.
You're a popular guy.
Uh, I was trying to say, you know, as you mentioned, I, I provided that information as, you know, one is a general overview and one and second as a sort of a conversation starter of, you know, somewhere, somewhere, somewhere to base our discussions from. Uh, and as you notice from the other municipalities and some state and county information, you know, we're not that far off what, you know, is predominant regulations in the area. They vary a little bit with the length and a little bit with the ED, with the number of dwelling units, but you know, everybody's in a, in a similar ballpark. And, and as you mentioned, you know, we talk a lot about emergency access, but it technically is only mandated in the age qualified community. So that's something else we would want to look into. Um, if you want to include that and more, uh, you know, across the board with different developments.
Let me ask you, then the age qualified due to more likelihood of emergency due to age?
I, I don't remember our full discussions back. I know at the time we had, you know, Rose Cliff that had one main entrance and we insisted on having the emergency access out, out the rear. Um, I don't remember if that was the sole driving force or if we were just concerned that they might have more occurrences of emergency services than other communities would.
But even in that recent project that we had near the hospital, there were two accesses, access points to the street. But within that development, we still granted a waiver on an oversized cul-de-sac.
Are you referring to the THDP pro- project?
Yes.
Okay, well, just a couple of things there is, that was only ever before you as a sketch plan. So there was no final actions were taken. Um, and they, and they have some made some modifications to the configuration and where the emergency access points are going to be. So, you know, we all have another bite at that apple, you know, when they submit their full preliminary plan with all details.
This is, this is Tim. Why can't we just say it's 800 feet? And for any consideration for anything over 800 feet, there needs to be emergency access, a secondary point. Like if it's, if there's, if that's not in the plan, it won't be considered. I mean, can't we just write something up legally like that? Say that's the deal. I mean, I think the 800 feet with the 12 dwelling units is certainly within reason with everything else you're showing here. And actually probably a little bit more lenient than some other, um, you know, some of the other townships around at 500 and what have you, but I don't know who that is.
Casey Jones.
Okay, so I don't know who that was. It wasn't anything here, I don't think. But anyway, so I mean, can't we just say like, if it's, if it's, if you want a variance over 800 feet, then there has to be emergency access.
That's fine, as long as we define what emergency access means.
Right, and then have a definition for it, right? It has to be, you know, whatever car path width to get an emergency vehicle down, whatever ambulance, something, I mean, but come up with what that might be.
Right, I, I agree with Tim. That's exactly what I was thinking. You know, once we hit that 800, we have to require it somehow. But again, you know, John's concern is what is that standard going to be? And I think if we're all in agreement that this is the, the avenue to take, that we have to discuss the, the standard of that, that secondary access.
I would say that right now, I think we can kind of enforce that because the, the ordinance only says to 800 feet. After that, they need to get a waiver. So if we say the only way you're going to get a waiver is to have a secondary access, they really can't argue that fact, I don't think.
But the situation that we've had with the developer that's been in multiple times is because there isn't clarity on the, the rules, they keep coming back with variations off of their same design, looking to see if they can get our, our approval. And I just, I, I honestly, I don't think it's fair to him because I think it's almost a case of bring me a rock since he's, he's trying to look at, see what he can do to maximize his development. Yet because there isn't firm clarity on what he has to do, it's a guessing game. And I, I, I think whatever we come up with should be fairly clear and fairly rigid. So that folks know when they're laying out their design, what the requirements are.
Andy, you have any input?
No, I'm, I'm, that all sounds very logical to me. Uh, my next question would be, you know, P loops, which are, you know, kind of a giant cul-de-sac in a way, you know, do we want to, uh, put any, you know, uh, clarification on that?
Right, but you know, I mean, the, the difference of the P loop is of, if there's an emergency within the loop, you have, you still have two ways out, back to the entrance. Um, unless the emergency is between the street, between the entrance and the, and the split of the P loop, I guess. Uh, whereas a cul-de-sac, if you have an emergency, anybody on the, on the bulb side of the emergency is, is stuck there.
Right, yeah, well, I, I guess on the, on the P loop rate, the, the lead-in leg can't be what more than a thousand, is that right, or?
500.
500.
Total length of 3,000.
Yeah, personally, I mean, personally, I don't, I mean, the P loop kind of is what it is. It's 500 feet. Um, I mean, we could possibly put something more in there, but I think the cul-de-sac is, you know, something that kind of needs to be addressed. So like John said, so there's clarity. Because at the same time, like we're sitting here saying, there's some arbitrary thing that we come up with that's an emergency access and you have to have this emergency access that's not in the code. So, you know, at some point in time, we're infringing on property owner rights too. You know what I mean? Like, I mean, this guy has the ability, you know, he has his land and he can develop it and he's within legal, you know, uh, you know, he's, he's within his rights to do this. And we keep saying, well, because of some, you know, emergency access need or wants, um, you know, you can't do what you want to do. And that's, you know, infringing on his property owner rights. I think we need to take a look at that to make sure that we're not doing that and have something that's stated that, that is, you know, like John said, clarifies, you know, what it is that we're looking for.
Yeah, so I don't want to do anything to limit somebody's right to develop their property, but also at the same time, don't want to give them unlimited access. You know, as Tony pointed out in, in the supervisor meeting, if, if we have rules that we're not going to enforce, what's the sense of having a rule? So I, I said, I, I just think it's, it's not, not to take away somebody's rights, but at least to give them guidance on how they can exercise their rights.
Yeah, I, I agree. And that's what I'm saying. I'm in agreement with you because we have some arbitrary thing that we're just saying, we want this and it's not in the, you know, uh, guidance for the developers, but uh, if we cut, my point is if we continue to just have some arbitrary want or, you know, whatever for emergency access and it's not in the, uh, code, then that, that, I don't think we can deny the guy from, from, or anyone that comes through with a legal plan.
Well, we have the, we have the right to deny the waiver request.
Steve, will we require an emergency?
Well, yeah, but like the P loop street that he came back with, that second plan was legal.
Yeah, it was.
Right? It was a cul-de-sac off of a P loop. So in that sense, that was totally within, you know, within township guideline.
I think it was a cul-de-sac off of a cul-de-sac. He really didn't have a P loop in there.
Yeah, well, you could, you could play hairs there, but yeah, I, I hear you. But I'm just saying, you know, in theory, that was technically, I think it was a, it was a legal plan.
Steve, in the age restricted communities where we require an emergency access, do we define what that emergency access is, or is it just a second point of access?
It, it's not well defined. It's just a, the second access, second emergency access.
Does it say emergency or just say second access?
Um, I know it references emergent. If you give me a second, I'll, I'll pull it up in my book. But as it reads in the ordinance, it's at least two means of ingress and egress shall be provided for emergency service vehicles to access the community. So it's, it's, it's fairly vague. I mean, it could be, it could be two regular streets, you know, two, two full points of access or, you know, it leaves it open to be a full access and some other quote unquote, emergency access. But no, there's no dimensional standards or construction standards for it.
Well, for a fire truck to get in, we'd need what? At least a 12-foot lane?
That would be ideal, yeah.
You know, and if you leave it at, you know, if you leave it written vaguely like that, it gives you, uh, a little bit of um, flexibility, uh, in improving the, the access. You know, then be, it'd still be up to the supervisors to approve the design. We'd have to make them prove that their access they're providing is, is suitable for emergency vehicles.
I guess my point on that is if we're going to require emergency access, and I think it's got to be an access that's sufficient to handle an emergency vehicle.
True.
Very logical, Alex.
As I think it was stated a little bit earlier, the, the more specific you are in the ordinance, the, the easier it will be to, you know, explain to developers and, and enforce. Uh, I, I think we've had these discussions before. By nature, the subdivision ordinance is intended or, you know, the, the NPC, the state municipalities planning code allows developers to ask for waivers of subdivision ordinance requirements. So no matter what you write in the ordinance, you're still going to have people come back and ask, ask for waivers of it. But if you could have a standard that you're comfortable with and be consistent with enforcing it, it makes it easier to explain to developers what you will and won't, and won't bend on. And, uh, you know, we find this time and time again, no matter how well you think you craft an ordinance, you'll get a configuration of property that doesn't fit the rules, the next plan that comes into the township. So you know, while we want to make it as comprehensive as possible and as clear as possible, you know, I, I would just caution not to get hung up on every, every little detail because you're never going to get every plan to conform with one set of rules. But if we could get a nice general set of rules that we consistently enforce, it should be to our benefit.
So to that end, should it be in the, in the zoning ordinance rather than the SADO?
I, I would have to talk to Mary. I think we had this discussion, Chris. Typically, it's, it wouldn't be in a zoning ordinance. Um, zoning ordinance is typically, what you would refer to as land use requirement. So it's the use of the land, not how necessarily how it's constructed. I think it's, it snuck into the, uh, age qualified, thinking that was a little bit of a special circumstance development. And we had, if you want to develop with the age qualified, you had to do X, Y, and Z. Um, I don't know if she would agree, if Mary would agree that you could have a similar standard in the zoning orders for just a plain old, single-family residential development. But I would have to clarify that with her. I, I don't see it really in other ordinances, other townships, at least not across the board. There may be special circumstances for, uh, even in the village standard, you know, you, you could probably have something like that, but I don't know if you could have a, an across-the-board uh, standard like that in the zoning ordinance, truly be enforceable, but that's something to look into.
Well, I mean, this is a question I, if it's, if it's an irregularity, we certainly don't need to try it here. I think if we, uh, if we can come up with an agreeable standard to throw into the SADO on, on the cul-de-sac design and see how, how successful we are at enforcing it.
I'd like to talk about the, the P loop just a, a little bit more, uh, if I could, Chris.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, Greg, could I share my screen, please? All right, let's see here. There we go. Uh, can everybody see this, this P loop?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so this is, this is my development. This is Providence. Um, I live up here on a, on a cul-de-sac. We have a, a 2,700-foot P loop with two 250-foot cul-de-sacs coming off of it. Um, there is a, a, a walking path here that's big enough that you could drive a, a car through if you needed to, that ties into the, to the, the cul-de-sac in the, in the townhomes next door. Um, but I, I might just suggest that in, in the same way, I, I'm in favor of if it's over 800 feet, uh, you know, requiring some form of emergency access and we can, we can just quantify what that is. Maybe we could specify also if the, uh, entrance leg on the P loop is over, um, well, the, the, the ordinance is 500, I guess, but, uh, even if we open that up to 800, basically if the cul-de-sac or the entrance leg of the P loop is longer than 800 feet, that we require the emergency access. Because in this case right here, you know, anywhere in here gets cut off and it's, uh, the same net effect. So, um, wondering.
How long is that? How long is that entrance on your, on that P loop?
I actually had my son do this, Tim. So I, I did, I didn't measure it out, but if the whole thing's 20, 2,700 feet, I'd figure we're probably, I'd say at least 1,000 there.
So that was done prior to the new zone or new SADO, right, Steve? What year was that?
This was 2001 I, I moved in, so.
Yeah, this goes back away, but this is a, this is a good example because, uh, a lot of ordinances and, and it might be some argument that yours is written this way also, that, that, that 800 foot is really only applicable when you have a, you know, a cul-de-sac. It just has a, has a definite end that, that can't be extended anywhere in the future. A lot of ordinances allow for even longer roads, and I, I think yours may also. If it's quote unquote, a temporary cul-de-sac where you extend the road to the next farm field and then it could be, um, it could be extended into, into another development and maybe loop around. And, and this development provides for that in two locations. Uh, where that sharp bend is in, in the P loop, uh, there is an access, uh, right-of-way through that wooded area that could take you down into that field.
Right.
That, that would come back out to, um, climber.
Climber.
And also I think that other little cul-de-sac also goes to the property boundary to the, we'll call it to the west.
Over here.
And if, if that property, which I think now might have a conservation easement on it, but there's some property over there that, that, that could develop. So there's a bit of a, I don't want to say catch 22, but the ordinance is talking about permanent cul-de-sac lengths can only be 800 feet. A lot of developments in the past were looking towards, you know, unified development. We didn't want just independent roads. We wanted, you know, one community to connect to the other community to have a, an interconnected network. The issue is you get situations of, like Providence, where they never built the development next door, that, you know, that property never developed. So there never was an extension. So that's something else we might want to play with the language in the, in the cul-de-sac section. But it does talk about temporary and, and permanent cul-de-sacs. How long is temporary? You know, if we, if we really anticipate a, a development on the property next door, it might make sense. You allow a longer street that, that will be temporary, or you expect it to be temporary, to get it to be of, you know, a whole second access to the, the community. But that, that's hard to judge anymore. You know, markets go up and down as we've seen over the years and some things get developed and some get put in a conservation easement and will never be developed.
Okay, well, that was, that was just my, my comment. So I, but in, in the spirit of everything that we talked about, like I said, if, if we go over a certain length, I'm in favor of, you know, quantifying some for what, what emergency access is. So, thank you.
Steve, I think we've talked in the past about the fact that our 800 feet came from the minimum lot frontage or for 12 equivalent dwelling unit or for 12 dwelling units.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, in the rural areas where it might be 150-foot lot width, you know, if you had six lots on either side, at 150 feet, you'd be essentially 800 feet. So I think the idea was, you know, the discussion was if we were going to allow 12 units, we had to allow a street that was long enough to actually build the 12 units.
And I guess my question then is, you know, it seems like we're kind of right, right in the mix of where everyone is on cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac length. Is there some, you know, magic number that that's tied to with regard to, um, fire engines or access or length of hose or anything like that, or is it?
No.
All right, well, moving forward, I, you know, staying with the cul-de-sac discussion, are, are all planning commission members comfortable with adding some type of language to, uh, enforce emergency, some type of emergency access if they're over 800 feet?
I am. I would say require.
Yeah, require, same, same thing. I, I am, yes. Yeah, I am, I am too. Yeah, if, if there's a request for a variance for a street longer than 800 feet, then a emergency access needs to be provided.
Okay. I, I would be in agreement if that access road was street, act, street maintainer or street. Um, yeah, rights. Constructed as if it was a street, a single-lane street, not, not driveways, walking paths, anything like that, but a, a regular, single-lane street, I would be inclined to accept.
John, in other areas, I've seen him do it as a, um, like the, the open block pavers and then maybe even bollards at the end of that. So it's not necessarily a road, but it is wide enough and designed to support a fire truck coming through. Is that something you'd be okay with?
Well, I'd, I'd like to see it maintained as a street. So when it snows, it gets plowed. Uh, when there's potholes, the potholes get fixed. Not necessarily looking for something as aesthetic as, I'm looking for something that's functional.
Got you. Steve, have you had any experience with those kind of emergency access routes?
We have several of them in the township now. Um, some are just a stone bed under light topsoil. Some are checker blocks or other versions. Uh, that's actually what is in Rose Cliff, between Rose Cliff and, and the Garris development behind it. Um, there's a checker block driveway from the Lutheran community, the independent living units um, out to State Road on the other, on the other side of the basin from where the main entrance is. Uh, there's one of them in Fresco. Uh, again, they are good most of the time. Probably when it snows, people forget that they're there. You know, nobody does plow them when it snows. A paved access would be more, more likely to be maintained just because it's apparent and, uh, you know, people won't lose sight of the fact that it's there. Uh, but we, we do have them, various types. Uh, we even have them on lot like around, uh, Hidden Meadows. Those, those buildings back there by the THP property, they both have fire lanes that loop around the back of both of their properties that have stabilized grass, uh, fire lane.
Grass, correct. It's, nobody's plowing that.
Right.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I, I think John's right. If it's, if it's something you're, you're going to require, I think enforcing the maintenance of it is going to be in question. Um, you know, whether it's a homeowners association or the township takes it over, um, we have to, we have to make sure that the maintenance is enforced.
Chris, may I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Um, about the maintenance, I know Steve said like, uh, Fresco and Telford, uh, community, which are that emergency access is private, but, uh, again, with the maintenance, I don't know if this is possible, but if you had again, with the maintenance, I don't know if this is possible, but if you had an emergency access, could you make that development an HOA? So then the township doesn't have the burden of the maintenance of that property. That would be my one question. The other question is that, um, I guess the definitions of an emergency access, uh, John was saying, you know, perhaps, you know, a pole or a chain across it, but wanted to see a road. Um, you know, I just like who, who's really responsible for that at the end of the day? I mean, is it really the township or is it an HOA? And that's why I don't know if it's possible to make it an HOA or not on that. I just, I, I wouldn't want to see the township with the burden of repairing potholes and, uh, you know, and the maintenance of it and the snow plowing of it or something like that. Cause God forbid if someone has to get back there in an emergency and it isn't plowed for some reason. I think that we're on the hook as a large. It's only my opinion.
No, I, I opinion, I, I basis there. Hopefully any of these roads will not develop potholes because they won't be being used. Um, but snow removal would be the big one. At, at least that's my opinion. Um, and again, the enforcement of the maintenance, whether it is an HOA or if it's, if the development is taken over by the township, I would assume it's the township's responsibility to, to keep that maintained. If it's an HOA, then we have to deal with the enforcement of, of keeping that maintained through the HOA.
And with an HOA, you know, Steve mentioned the economy goes up and the economy goes down and businesses come and go. You know, if you're willing to trust an HOA to do this, you're assuming that there's always going to be an HOA there that's going to do this and, and not the fault or go out of business or something like that. So you're, you're, you're putting the burden on maintaining, um, you know, roadway to a, a private company.
Yeah, you are. And they're making, they'd be maintaining their, their lane as well. Um,
Yes.
And it would, it would be in their best interest to keep their emergency access open in case one of them had an emergency. But that's a mentality that's sometimes hard to sell.
I guess my thought is it's not really a, a business at that point. It's the homeowners association. So as long as there's people living there, there would be a home, there would be a homeowners association. Um, so I mean, they should be able to maintain that. And I guess if they don't, it, it's pretty much on them as far as a liability at that point.
I, I disagree. It's a business. I mean, it, it collects money from the residents and you know, that they go belly up for some reason, that, that's, that's not impossible that they could go out of business. And then what happens? I assume, I guess if they liquidated the asset, somebody would come along and buy it, but you know, that even that's not a guarantee.
Yeah. I don't know if it could exactly work the way you're, you're referring, John, because of the way HOAs are, are structured. Um, and you have ownership based on, you know, the owners of the HOA are the owner who have ownership of the properties in the development. So I'm not sure it could get sold off per se, but it can essentially be bankrupt. You know, if people don't pay their assessments, there's no money in the kitty and they have no money to do work. And, and we have seen, you know, over the years, smaller HOAs are the ones that, that struggle more because uh, they don't have enough interested people to, to, to keep it up and, and to do the activities that are necessary for HOAs. Uh, but that said, you know, West Rock Hill doesn't own a stormwater management basin. We have some version of an HOA in every development that was built in the township and we haven't had any significant problems with them that I'm aware of over time. They may not maintain things the way we exactly think they should, but they, they have been functioning.
Well, how, I, I guess I need opinions on, on how restrictive we want to make the, um, the ordinance. How defined do we want to make it, I guess, is the question.
I guess my thought on that is we want to make it as defined as we can, just so we're giving some, some clarity to developers looking to do this. So I think, you know, if we give them guidance of, you know, paved with a minimum 12-foot lane capable of supporting emergency vehicles. I don't know if that's enough. And then I guess the other question is, where does that emergency access lead to? I mean, does it come out of the bulb and come back within 500 feet of the entrance, within 200 feet to another road?
Right. Yeah. Good question. I mean, you look at, at, uh, the Schlosser project, they've got that, got that driveway taking it right back down just about to the entrance point. Um, I mean, it would be nice if it, if it accessed the same row or another road for that much, uh, at a different area. But, you know, the feasibility of that, you know, depends on the, the property.
Yeah. I, I would think you'd want to start out with the requirement that it had to have access to a, you know, to a public road.
Correct.
Not necessarily back to itself, but to a, to a public road other than the new development street.
Yeah.
When I was talking before is if a situation really didn't lend itself, they could ask for a waiver of that, of that portion. Uh,
That, then.
Yeah. The slot, I mean, the Schlosser development, that's a, you know, to some degree it's uh, a minor case in my mind anyway. It's a, it's a slight length in, increase. You're not adding extra lots and they have public water. So, you know, that, that might be something that, oh, you know, those are good arguments for a waiver. Let's put it that way. As opposed to, um, you know, the Butter Creek project, which is a substantial increase in length, no public water and the maximum number of lots that are permitted. Now, if you kind of balance those facts, you know, I think the Schlosser is an easier sell than the, than the Butter Creek. And then Schlosser is also trying to provide that loop driveway back that, you know, could be of some benefit. But that's where you get in trouble with trying to have defined set of rules for everybody. Cause not every property fits a, a perfect mold.
Right.
Uh, Schlosser does bring up another good point. I mean, they're talking about maintaining that existing driveway. But who, who's maintaining that? Isn't it HOA? Is there now an easement that grants access from the bulb all the way back down to the entrance through that property?
Uh, essentially it would have to be an easement or covenant, but 90% of that driveway is, you know, the driveway to the house. So it would be expected to be maintained because that's the property owners would use it.
I thought they also had access off the bulb on that one.
Right. They extended it then out the backside of the existing driveway over to the bulb to make it the, the full loop.
So which one would they commonly use?
Well, that, I don't know. I, I guess as of today, they use the, you know, right off, off of the road, they would use the long entrance.
Right.
Guess you never could tell.
Um, yeah.
What someone would do in the future.
They use the one that's plowed. All right. Well.
But convert, you know, conversely, even if it didn't have that driveway, would you consider the slight increase in length with lower lots and, and public water?
Right. That's a good point.
I don't know. I'm pretty much convinced by Steve's argument that that's not really any different than, you know, any, an 800-foot cul-de-sac at that point, probably better than most 800-foot cul-de-sacs. I don't know what the other members think.
No, it's a good argument for sure. Um, you know, the, the public waters is a, is a major for sure. Uh, and it's, what is it? Nine, nine lots? So it's, it's three under the max and it's only 150 foot longer.
And I, and I'm not sure that if he really had to, they could make the lots work with a little bit shorter cul-de-sac, but they would be you know, funky looking lots to make it, to make it happen.
Right. And we're not here tonight to approve that plan. So.
No, but it's a good example of a marginal plan. It's just outside of the standards as opposed to something that's a thousand feet outside of the standards.
Right.
I guess, John, I'm curious what your thoughts on that would be.
I, I'm, I'm sitting here kind of scratching my head trying to understand what the differences are. If, if you're still talking about using a private driveway as a secondary access, I, I don't see, to me, that, that's still a, a, a no, a no-go. I mean, it, believe it should be something that's maintained as if it was a street. Not, not a private driveway. It, Jim said, if, you know, somebody wants a load of mulch, uh, dropped on their driveway, uh, or they go to Florida for three months in the winter and two feet of snow piles up on that driveway because nobody's home. To me, that, that doesn't meet the, uh, the needs of a, of an emergency access.
Now, I, I think we were discussing waiving the emergency access for that project because of the limited number of lots and the presence of public water.
Well, public order is one issue, but you know, police activity is another issue as well that, you know, in, in the state of affairs of the world that we live in today is becoming an increasing issue that, uh, that needs not to be forgotten. I think if somebody made, made the point, it might've been, might've been Tim. You know, if somebody moves in, you know, a thousand feet down a, um, a, a cul-de-sac, you know, it's a little bit of buyer beware, you know, they, they understand the risks that they're taking. But at the same time, I, I think we have an obligation to make sure that as much as possible, people are safe in their homes. And if they need an emergency exit, that they can get out if they have to.
Well, I think that's key though. You, you know, the word is emergency exit, John. Um, you know, if you put a whole new street in or anything else, I mean, then technically it's not a cul-de-sac anymore. Uh, I mean, if you broke it off, that's one thing, but you know, I think you get to the point where, you know, what is it that you're building or proposing?
Well, many of the, the townships that, uh, were enlisted, Steve had, had their maximum length at 500 feet. We're already at 800. We're not quite twice what the, the number of other townships have. And then if you're talking about granting variances on top of that, i- it, it just seems like we're, we're the outlier.
Yeah, no, I, I hear you there. I'm just saying with, with the standards of what, you know, emergency access versus, you know, another road. You know, that's, you know, emergency access, if you get in 12 feet, I mean, that's not, you know, necessarily another road. I can understand the maintenance of it, what have you. I agree with that pretty much, but you know.
Well, nobody's forcing these people to build developments have longer than 800 feet of cul-de-sac. They're making that choice.
Yeah, I hear you. Yeah. I agree with that. I, I keep going back to that P loop with the cul-de-sac off of it though. Because technically that was within our, you know, requirements.
I'll have to go back and look at that again. To me, it just looked like it was a cul-de-sac ganged off of another cul-de-sac.
No, it was, the first leg was a P loop.
Yeah. I think again, the issue there is there's not enough definition of a P loop to, to say that it's not. You know, it wasn't a, a little turnaround, like just an expanded cul-de-sac. It was substantial loop around, but we don't, my, my difficulty would be there's nothing in the ordinance that says that's not a P loop street. And again, when we did the P loop street ordinance, we kind of, everybody had in their mind what a P loop looked like, but you know, somebody always takes it to the extreme and, and you have to make a judgment call somewhere.
All right. Well, we need to move forward. Um, again, we're, it, it sounds like we're all comfortable for putting something in for cul-de-sac over 800 foot. To consider a waiver over 800 foot, we're going to need some type of, of access, what that access is and, and who and how it's maintained is in question.
Jim, did you have any thoughts with regard to ownership of the access road?
Was that the main, Alex?
Yes.
Yeah. No, I don't. Um, I just, I wanted to get this out as a discussion and, and hear input from all of you. Um, I did not have any input personally about the ownership. I would like to see it stay away from us, the township, only because it's, it's the additional cost that we'd be throwing onto it. But if, you know, if it comes down to where we have to do it, then, then we'll do it. But I would really like to see, see it stay within the development, the ownership. My opinion, just my opinion.
And the, the desire for the, for the township to take over development roads is basically stemmed from, um, Ingram's Way. Is that correct?
Historically, that was the, the easy one to point to.
Right.
If you're going to get it back, you might as well get it right the first time and, and keep it the first time. Uh, townships all over the place have struggled with that issue and have gone, have gone back and forth. Now, the township did bend with, you know, Rose Cliff, but uh, I think that was the point that, um, you know, it was a larger, larger community with a strong, what everyone felt would be a strong HOA and, and wouldn't be, uh, you know, they wanted it private. So we wouldn't anticipate that that would be a street that they would come back and, and try to turn it back to the township. When you have a couple just individual properties, not as a designed as a community, that's might be more likely that they would try to get rid of the road in the future. But that's a, you know, that's a policy call. Townships treat it differently all over the county.
And, and just to throw on top of that, um, I think we have to look at, you put in 12 houses, how much more taxes you want to get? Where are those tax, where's that tax money going to go? Uh, most of it's going to go back into the roads. Now, is there enough going back into the roads to cover maintenance for these additional houses and this additional road? So I, I just think there's a lot more discussion on that that has to be looked at, but personally, I would love to see it stay back where it was, but I'm just, just one person's opinion.
I do know that, uh, Ingram's Way made a contribution to the town, for the township to take over their maintenance.
And that's good news, Chris.
I mean, is, is that something to consider?
I think, yeah, I think we could. Go ahead. Whoever's going to speak.
This is Steve. I, I was just going to say, I, I think there are two different issues though, that we may not want to co-mingle right now of the cul-de-sac dimensional requirements and standards. And is one issue and whether or not the township wants to take public road, all roads as public or, or have HOA private roads might be a separate discussion from what the cul-de-sac standards are. Cause that conversation could apply to any development, whether it has 10 roads, 20 roads or, or one cul-de-sac street in it. And just to get back to one other thing that was mentioned, uh, about, you know, relying on an HOA to do the maintenance or even the winter maintenance plowing of the road. Uh, any agreement we, we could have about these roads would be just like a detention basin where the township has the right to enter the, enter the property and do what they, what they need to do if it's not being properly maintained. So an emergency access, even if it's left up to the HOA to plow, the township would have the right to go on there and plow it if they felt that it was necessary.
Yeah. All right. So we'll, uh, concentrate our focus on. concentrate our focus on the, uh, the agenda here. We'll worry about HOAs at another point. So getting back to the original discussion, 800 feet anymore, we want an access, we want an emergency access, we have to come up with some type of standard. Bearing in mind that if it's in the SLO, they can still ask for a waiver from the standard.
I think what we talked about was a 12-foot wide paved road, minimum 12-foot wide paved road that would accommodate an emergency vehicle. So whatever turning radiuses or whatever you'd need for that, and access back to a public street.
If there's access back to the public street, does that possibly present additional issues to, with Penn dot permits if it's, if it's a Penn dot road?
Oh, I'm sure you'd need a, a permit for it if it's a Penn dot road.
Yeah, I could bring all kinds of extra things up, but again, that's would technically be the developer's issue to resolve, not the township's.
Yeah, we'll come back and say, how about if I return it to my own lane? Um, but I, I mean, that's a great starting point. Um, running out, running out the public road, 12-foot wide, it's got to meet the approval of the fire marshal or whatever. But I, I mean, if we, if we can keep it, let's say it's something we can probably pull off, I would think.
I'll go throw one more thing out there. Uh, I heard the word paved road before. Do you want a paved road or do you want a road with a foundation that will hold a emergency vehicle? In other words, it doesn't have to be paved. There, there could be other bond, foundation material that could be used that might be more appropriate for the type of development it is or something? I don't know.
I, yeah, I think if you put the wording in there that it needs to be able to accommodate an emergency vehicle, you know, at that point, there's at least some flexibility with regard to what that has to be. But from our standpoint as well as developer standpoint.
Yeah, thanks.
I think the concern was that if you wanted to see it maintained during the winter and paved or and plowed, it was going to have to be paved to really do that.
Yeah, that, that's where I was going with my prior discussions. Is the winter, winter maintenance is certainly less likely and more difficult if it's not paved.
South Tower Road is still gravel and Greg's team does a nice job plowing that every time it snows.
It, it can be done, yeah.
Maybe just put in the words maintainable. Maintainable emergency access.
Maybe year-round maintained.
Yeah.
It sounds again too ambiguous. One definition of maintainable is different from another.
Well, I don't know that we'll craft all the language tonight, but, um,
Right.
You know, I could put something together and, and, you know, and, and look at the language in more detail later. Maybe we, you know, give a couple of options that it could be stone surface, paved surface, or X. And I'm not sure what else is, might be appropriate, but you know, we could lead people in the right direction, but give them more than one, more than one option.
Right. All right.
So in, in, in terms of the discussion this evening, is that, is that sufficient for a next step as since I assume Steve's going to be the one crafting the initial draft of the language, we're giving Steve enough guidance to, to put something together that he can bring back that we can talk about next time?
Well, I, I want to circle back to, to touch on something I talked about before, because it, it's the next Achilles heel. And that, i- if you go to those papers that I had sent you, it's the, it was the last page. It's actually the photocopy of our ordinance. And, and that sort of, the first two comments talk about that extension to future, into future developments and we still end up with that potential dilemma that, you know, if the road can be considered a temporary cul-de-sac, the 800 foot is out the window and it could be as long as, you know, there is no standard. Let's put it that way. Uh, similar to what Andy was showing in, in, in the Providence development. I don't know if we want to tackle that or be tougher about that issue, what constitutes a potentially, you know, a street that could potentially be extended. There, there is planning benefit to building a street all the way to the property boundary so it can be extended in the future. There, there is merit to that. Uh, instead of just stopping it at 800 feet, to which, you know, might be 400 feet from the property line, and then it'll never be extended by anybody else in, in, in the future. It, it's a, it's a tough, one, I'm, I'm not sure that there's a clear answer to it, but I, I just want to, I want to make sure everybody's clear on that point. That the 800 foot is for a quote unquote permanent cul-de-sac. And when a developer comes in and says, well, this isn't permanent, it's temporary because it connects to the next farm field and could be extended at some point in the future. Our ordinance right now allows for that.
Could we, could we throw in the emergency access requirement if it's over 800 feet?
Certainly.
And I mean, obviously.
Certainly, we can make that a more universal, you know, whether it's temporary or permanent, it has to have an emergency access.
Right.
Yeah, but if it's 800, does it still need the emergency access? I guess is the big question.
Well, no, but that's, we're saying no road that's only 800 feet needs an emergency access.
Once it's over 800, it needs emergency access.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Uh, Steve, I'm sorry.
Whether it's permanent or temporary.
Right.
That's where I'm getting, whether it's permanent or temporary, if it's over 800 feet, it needs the emergency access.
Yeah, so if we could throw in some language in either number one or number two of the, uh, of section 508, saying that if it's this temporary cul-de-sac is more than 800 feet, it's kind of, then we require an emergency access lane.
Yeah, that would take care of the situation with Andy's development.
Right. And Andy's development, Andy was right in pointing out that pathway. That was intended to be an emergency access between JBM and the, uh, and the Providence. So.
You want to allow that based on the zoning district? Like if it's a suburban zone for suburban residential, allow the temporary cul-de-sac concept, but if it's, you know, the rural areas that, um, that that's not allowed?
In the rural areas?
Well, you know, RC, RA, that you wouldn't allow the temporary cul-de-sac, but if it's in the suburban residential that you, you would permit it?
I think the only place you're going to find it is in the RA or RC where you'd have connectivity.
Yeah, on, on a planning issue, you know, in the rural area, you'd want interconnected roads just as much as you would in the development area. It might be more likely that it would be built sooner in the development area, but I think the, the, you know, the planning issue of wanting to have connected roads and not just a bunch of single cul-de-sac streets is desirable anywhere.
Steve, was I hearing you before that you were kind of in favor of the ball being pushed up to the property line just so that interconnection was easier?
Again, it's, you know, if there was a property next door that seemed viable for construction, yes. I'm just thinking, you know, you, you could leave it a little bit short, uh, similar to Providence where it's, you know, about one lot depth away and a neighboring developer would build that extra street. But if they had to build four, five, 600 linear feet of street onto an adjoining property to get it to connect, what would be the the chances that they would spend all that extra, all that extra expense?
Gotcha.
And we don't have a lot of that, but you know, what Andy pointed out is the, the prime example of that. I know other townships that have it all over the place. I mean, Hilltown had one and they made a long cul-de-sac that connected to another road. It was extended into the other development and made a longer cul-de-sac.
Yeah, how do we prevent that?
Yeah, well, and that gets back to, we, you know, we can never have a standard that's going to work for every, every single
Right.
scenario that comes before the township. We just have to try to make it as as, as detailed as we can.
Do we want to consider something prohibiting cul-de-sacs off of P-loops?
Please.
We certainly can. I mean, P-loop streets, as you saw on my chart, they're not, the standard isn't universal. Um, doesn't mean that other townships wouldn't allow them. They just don't call them out as a, as a particular thing. Uh, but we could redefine how we define how many lots. It's, you know, maybe it's not how many lots are on a cul-de-sac street, it's how many lots are on a single point of access to the development.
Right.
Well, that was the other thing I was wondering. Did we want to include any cul-de-sac, sack length within the P-loop street length? So if you've got a P-loop, whatever your cul-de-sac coming off of it counts towards your 3,000 feet.
Yeah, you can make it total, total length of all streets. But that it's somewhat of an arbitrary number, so you could set it where you want. But the, the total lots might be more of a
I think that's probably more, right, more fitting.
You could say that if the distance from the street to the end of the cul-de-sac is more than 800 feet, then you have to put it an emergency access in. Even with a P-loop in the middle.
Gotcha.
Steve, where is the language for P-loop?
It's the number seven on that section 508, just a simple statement.
Oh. Not a scene, entrance of 500 feet and the loop is 3,000 feet.
Yeah, and so it doesn't have the number of lot restriction in it.
Right.
Now, remember, Tim Snyder was calling for just the 12 lots with the P-loop plus the cul-de-sac street, so just adding a 12 lot limit wouldn't necessarily negate what he's, was trying to accomplish.
All right, so getting back to temporary cul-de-sacs, are we comfortable just throwing in the language with the uh, emergency access requirement over?
I'm good with that.
As am I.
Yes.
Okay.
That is will.
So Steve, you have, uh, direction on regular temporary and permanent cul-de-sac, uh, requirement language?
Yes. Now, I guess just one other thing to clarify, are we also saying no more than 12 units on any temporary or permanent cul-de-sac?
I'm comfortable with no more than 12 units on permanent. Temporary, there might be some issues.
Yeah, it gets it's a lot more complicated when you talk about temporary.
Yeah, if you want to maximize your, maximize your property and building this long temporary cul-de-sac to the edge of the property and you can only put 12 homes on it.
Well, I know, uh, when it comes to real estate and development, putting a timetable on anything is next to impossible, but I mean, when we're looking at temporary, is that if there's someone else coming in with a plan, if it's that there's a possibility that could happen at some point in the future, is it within the next five years, it's likely to happen?
Yeah. I think it would be hard to define. We could certainly, we could certainly throw a little bit more verbiage at it, you know, that they, um, to confirm that the, the property's not conserved, that it's, you know, not burdened by natural features, that it couldn't be developed, or, you know, throw a couple more requirements for the the initial developer to show that the, that other property is actually buildable.
Right.
When it gets built is, you know, like Alex said, you can't control that.
Would you want to say that the whole plan has to be submitted at once? However, a temporary cul-de-sac would come into play only if it was going to be built in stages? That's a little bit more defining than maybe or hopefully or could be, just saying it has to be a, a full plan to come in at once.
Well, John, I think the point is it would be two different developers developing it. It would just give you the potential to connect the street when the next development is actually done.
Right, but that's the base that's open-ended.
Yeah, I think the, the initial developer needs approved feasibility.
Yeah, that there's a reasonable, you know, chance that a joining property could be developed. Like Steve said, if there's a conservation easement on it, or you know, whatever Plan 319, that it's, you know, probably not going to be developed. So therefore, uh, you know, these, needs to be some, you know, reasonable, uh, which is again, like John said, is somewhat open-ended, but you know, potential for this to be.
If he comes in with a plan and says he can build into, or, you know, his neighbor's going to build on a conserved property, then you know he's not, it's not possible. It's got to be, it's got to be feasible. He's got to prove that it's feasible that this other property developed.
Right. You get something like the Kratz property where you have that steep slope and all the wetlands back there. You know, you're not going to interconnect through that.
Right. Couldn't you put a walking path through there? So yeah, um, you know, aside from, from that type of requirement, um, it'd really be hamstringing at, at 12 lots if they have a, they have a large lot that they get to run, you know, to the other side, to the other property boundary. Might not be anywhere close to maximizing what he can do with the property. No. I think we have to figure out how to keep that somewhat open.
But if the property is that big, are they going to put a cul-de-sac on it? Or a temporary cul, I mean, you know, like at that point, like you could have enough property to bring a loop street back, right? Potential.
Providence is the example of where it wasn't wide enough to, to bring the loop street back. What there was an ideal property next to it that someday you could run a road through that come back to Clymer Ave. Just, it never happened and it, it, it may never happen. Now that has multiple streets in there, but it still all comes back to one entrance point off of Clymer Avenue.
Right. But I mean, in the future, we could kind of stymie that and say, you know, yeah, you got it big enough here to get that thing back. Now, you have enough room to do that or, you know, not put the cul-de-sac in.
And that, that might be helped by a more universal standard somewhere that says, about the secondary access, not just in the cul-de-sac provisions, but uh, a street, a general street standard that says over 12 lots. You, you know, you have to have a second.
A secondary access, right.
Secondary access to a public road.
Well, I think even with the cul-de-sac situation requiring a, a paved or, you know, a substantially constructed road or roadway, even if it's only 12 feet wide, starts to offset the, the potential benefit of just building a cul-de-sac and not having the road loop back around or loop back out.
Right.
So it might help drive things more to, to an actual road if they're going to have to build that, So it might help drive things more to, to an actual road if they're gonna have to build that, that emergency entrance anyhow, or access anyhow.
Yeah, it's a good point. Yeah, you could potentially get more lots if they, if their emergency access was actually an access road, potentially get more lots out of the deal.
Right, not having to go for waivers and any of that kind of stuff, yeah.
It would just be a matter of density in the area. Yeah. All right, well.
I, I could certainly draft something up and, you know, we could tackle it again. I don't expect that we come up with all the answers tonight.
Certainly chipping away at it.
One, one other issue that I didn't, I didn't put in my memo here, just cuz we're more about length and, and, you know, some of the dimensional standards. I did have a discussion with, uh, Public Works again about cul-de-sacs, and you know, in their world, they don't care how long it is. Uh, they care about the turnaround, and what they really care about the turnaround is how many driveways are on it and where they located. That, that's what ends up causing the problem with stacking snow in the cul-de-sacs. If they can't push straight back in the cul-de-sac, you know, it starts to become a problem, so, uh, I'll also try to add some language in of restrictions on how or where you could put access points in the, in the cul-de-sac, you know, and in a small lot development where you might have four driveways off the cul-de-sac, it makes it, you know, very difficult if you have four driveways and, and a fire hydrant and, and some other things there, you know, just cuz you drew an easement on the plan doesn't mean you could easily push the snow there. But if it's a cul-de-sac that has two driveways off it, and they're both to the sides, and they could push straight back, uh, you know, that, that works the best for, for Public Works. I'll try to tackle that issue, too.
Okay. All right, anything else on the topic? All right. Somebody was chiming in.
All right, I, I might've, I may have made a noise, but I was just looking back at my memo if there was any other.
All right, so you have, you have directions bring back to us, uh, next time we wanna talk about this.
Next time you have nothing on your agenda, sure.
All right, everybody comfortable with what we accomplished on this?
Yeah, I think it's a great start.
Yep, good start.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, well, then we'll end the discussion, I'm gonna move on to, uh, old business. I have no old business. Greg, is there anything we need to be talking about that you know of? Steve?
None that I know of.
How about any new business? I have no new business. Um, do we get a plan status review on this one?
I don't think I redid it this month, cuz there was nothing, no submissions and nothing changed on it.
Okay.
I just, I'm just grabbing mine now. Yeah, everybody, everybody, if anybody had an indefinite extension anyway, except for Tim Snyder's old, old plan, but that still goes to June.
Uh, what are we looking like for next month? Any ideas?
We might see TH Properties.
North Penn Water.
And North Penn Water.
What was the other one, Steve?
What Greg said, North Penn Water, potential water tank at the township building.
Right.
And, oh, uh, TH Properties.
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
I, I know they're, they're very close to submitting, I just don't know if it'll be in time for next meeting or not.
Anyone, any members have any new business?
Not for me.
Nor I.
All right, well, we'll move on to public comment. Uh, I knew we do have some audience members. Greg, did we get any emails?
No email for public comment.
No emails from public comment. Um, okay, so we do have a couple of visitors tonight. Um, if, if any of you, uh, that are on board tonight, uh, wanna make a comment, uh, just go ahead and chime in and, and wait for me to recognize you. Okay, well, hearing none. Um, I would say I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, meeting's adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good night.